Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the law.
Kay, could you please call the roll call?
Sure. Gary Cunningham.
Yep.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson. Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Sean Keare. Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
Steve Griffiths.
Here. Are there any agenda changes or revisions, Richard?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to move item eight, new business, ahead of item six, the hearing, so that we have a consultant here so that she doesn't have to sit through the whole hearing.
That makes sense to me. That's fine. All right. Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the May 16th meeting?
A motion we approve the minutes for May 16th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? I don't see any. All right. There are no final orders or resolutions. So we'll now go to item eight on the agenda, new business, discussion of the public involvement plan for the comprehensive plan visioning process. Richard, would you like to introduce our guest?
Yes, this is Sarah Singer from J. Rowe &amp; Co., J. Robinson &amp; Company. And they're the consultants that we've hired to work with us on preparing a vision statement for the city, which is the first step towards having the new comprehensive plan for the city. And one of the key elements, obviously, of that will be the public involvement plan. And Ms. Singer will tell us all about it. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Very happy to be here. I'm Sarah Singer with J. Rowe &amp; Co. and just really excited to be working with Lincoln City on this project. We had the opportunity to take a tour during one of our first kickoff meetings and just so impressed with all the things that you've accomplished to date and excited to hear about what your community envisions going forward. So, let's see. This presentation, I'll share a little bit more about our company and my background. We'll talk about the visioning journey for the Imagine Lincoln City project. I'll take you through some of the specifics of the public involvement plan and then open it up for questions, any additional input you might have as we move forward in this process. So our company, J. Rowe &amp; Co., or it was also known as J. Robertson &amp; Company, our passion is connecting communities. That's what we love to do and doing that through authentic engagement processes. We do a variety of work in cities and public agencies in Oregon and Washington, things such as strategic planning, public communications, economic development, workforce development. And really, it's all about building and connecting communities and supporting sustainable organizations. So we do a lot of community visioning work and have some award-winning visions out there, such as those in Hillsborough and with the city of Beaverton, Olympia, Washington, just a few, that are currently living, breathing visions that are regularly updated and doing wonderful things in those communities. My background, I worked in local government for almost 15 years before moving into consulting. I have a master's in public administration and a real passion for building relationships and building community, making those connections. I've seen that make such a difference in countless communities. And I started my career in Missouri, worked in Kansas, California, and then made my way up to Oregon about six years ago. So just really passionate about the work that we do and really excited to bring that here to Lincoln City. So some of the goals for this project, we've been, we kicked off in May and we've been working with the internal project team, which also includes your fellow commissioner, Patty Crowen. And we developed some goals for this project, including that it will serve as the process for the city's comprehensive plan update. It will reflect the community's distinctive character. We'll work with staff and volunteers alike to develop broad engagement strategies, make sure that we're reaching everybody. And we'll outline the vision through the community engagement process that we'll talk about here in more detail in just a minute. Finally, we'll develop some goals and policies and specific actions that will help you guys as you move your community into the future. So just high-level project schedule, as I mentioned, we had a kickoff meeting with the project team in May. And right now, we're moving into the public involvement phase, which starts with sharing this plan with you tonight, and then developing the public involvement materials that we'll talk about in the plan, to be getting out and to use those to get out into the community and start gathering input and ideas. We'll do that through October. And then in October, November, we'll actually start taking that input and crafting it into vision statements and actions and prepare a draft vision for the community to review, hoping to wrap everything up by November, December, where we present that draft vision to the council for final adoption. So what is a community vision? It's the way you want your community to look, feel, and function, and it can bring transformative change. What we really want people to do as we go out and solicit their ideas is get them to think bigger, think beyond the issue of the day, and describe their bigger vision for the future. People can get really hung up on whatever the topic of the day is. So we've made jokes in some of our meetings about, we've dealt with issues like chickens or medical marijuana dispensaries, or, you know, but thinking bigger and bolder beyond just whatever the policy issue of the day might be to say, what do you want your community to look like in 20 years? So really thinking big. I think a great way, a great, this is a little video that I'm going to play, and it kind of talks a little bit about community visioning and some of the tools. And so I'll talk more about video as an engagement strategy in a few minutes, but just want to share this with you. Hopefully, it plays. Richard said he tested it, so we should be good. The community visioning process is an exciting way to engage your community and gather ideas for how you want your community to look, feel, and function over time. J. Rowe &amp; Co. is excited to share our approach for engaging Lincoln City to support the comprehensive plan, visioning, and goal-setting effort. The foundation for any community vision is based on a broad engagement strategy. We use a variety of tools to ensure that we reach the broader population and diverse audiences. Tools can include idea boxes and strategic locations, focus groups, person-on-the-street interviews and surveys, online engagement through a project website and social media, community events and forums, and much more. These activities can generate hundreds of ideas, which will help to build your vision. The best visions are those which reflect community values and aspirations, and J. Rowe &amp; Co. is excited to partner with you as you map out your vision. So that was a short video that we put together, and we're hoping to use video as a tool going forward as one of our engagement strategies. I'll kind of dig into that detail for just a second. So, yeah, I don't know if anybody's familiar with HootSuite. It's a social media management platform. And one of the things that they put out these reports and statistics each year about how to use social media more effectively. And so one of their reports last year said that in 2017, over 70% of internet traffic will actually be through videos. So we've included that as part of our strategy. So we'll have some more short videos like this as we go throughout the process to try and help build awareness about outreach opportunities, events that we might be at, and hopefully, people will click through those and watch, and it will help to inspire some engagement. Zooming back out to the big picture, so the public involvement plan that you had in your packet, it kind of, it covers a few different things. So one is the community overview. The second is some outreach challenges that we might face in looking at the demographics of Lincoln City. It lists a variety of outreach activities. It has a list of stakeholders in there, which was identified by the project team. And then it also lists some strategies to address the challenges that are named in there. Finally, it also includes a section on assessing some of the tools and gathering data on how we did on the outreach to make sure that we're hitting our goals as we go along in this process. So starting with that first section, the community overview and outreach challenges, so in this chart, you can see just some demographics that we pulled together. And this just helps us to get a better idea of who lives here in Lincoln City and what sort of outreach tools we should be using to engage the population. So in looking at the age cohorts, they're distributed fairly evenly, I mean, under the age of 24, so you've got about 26% in your youth population. So again, I think social media will be a great way to engage some of those folks, as well as planning some activities at the schools and trying to, or, you know, maybe the skate park. We noticed that you guys have a fantastic skate park and skate culture here. So looking at some of the different ways where we can engage youth. You also have your, you know, about 20% of your population, 25 to 44, so designing activities and finding where those people gather and come together, maybe young parents, maybe at some of the community festivals that you have. And then also looking at age 65 and plus, 23%, so also looking where some of the 65 and better population, as most like to call them, where they hang out and gather, and designing outreach tools to make sure that we're reaching that population as well. So really, these numbers being fairly balanced, it's telling us that we need to use a variety of methods. So some new stuff, some traditional stuff, online, print, we'll be doing, putting a lot of things together to make sure we reach everybody. One of the other challenges that we noticed in looking at the demographics is housing. So you have a lot of tourists coming through, but you also have 1/3 of people who own or occupied homes, 1/3 renter occupied, and then 1/3 second homeowners. And so making sure that we're reaching all of those people, as well as they have invested in the community, we want to make sure we hear from them. I briefly mentioned the tourist population, so taking advantage of some of the summer activities and festivals going on here, we want to make sure that we hear from them as well, because they certainly have a big impact in how, in the local economy here. So outreach activities, the first one I want to touch on is just some of the online stuff that you'll be seeing. We'll develop a project website where you'll be able to find all sorts of information about the project over the, as things evolve, and reports and updates about activities and outreach opportunities. Social media, so we'll have a Facebook account, an Instagram account, and Twitter account to try and engage folks across those platforms. We'll also be working with a lot of community partner agencies who may also have, well, either a website or social media presence, and so we'll try to work with them to also cross-promote any opportunities and information that we're putting out there. And we'll use eBlast, so any existing email distribution list, if we're out at events and collecting people's emails, sending out information via email as well. Community events, you have a lot of great community events coming up this summer. Those are excellent opportunities to be out directly interacting with people, whether we have a booth at those, at those events, or through simple intercept surveys, just out talking to people on the street, asking them, you know, what are the things they love about Lincoln City, what, you know, what are things that they think should change over the next 20 years? So we'll be gathering input through those events as well. So stakeholders targeted outreach in public meetings. So the vision team, this is a group, this will be the citizen committee, that will help to, that will come together and they'll represent a variety of groups across Lincoln City. So we're looking at a group of about 10 to 15 people. The recruitment process is currently in the works, and so we hope to have that group convened here fairly soon. And they'll be also, as, we'll be checking in with them periodically throughout the process, but we'll also be using them to assist with some of the outreach opportunities. So whether that's community group meetings or helping with those intercept surveys at events, people like to talk to their neighbors, so it's important to have folks in the community out there helping with the outreach as well. I mentioned just briefly, community group presentations. So we've identified a long list of lots of groups here in Lincoln City, and so we'll be putting together some presentations and what we call a meeting in a box, to send folks out to be able to make some of these presentations, to make sure that we're reaching all these groups. We'll also do some focus groups. So we'll want to reach youth, the Latino population here, and then just maybe there's a general focus group that it just, it's a, it's a good cross-section of citizens from the community that we bring together. And focus groups are great because you can delve into more detail in the conversations. We'll hold a more traditional open house. Again, some people, that's, that's the way they like to interact with government, and so we'll have, won't be too traditional. It'll still be fun with lots of interesting, engaging ways to share your input on the vision, but there will be that, that public meeting-type event where people can, can come and share their input that way. And then finally, idea boxes. So we'll have idea boxes that will be situated throughout the community, and people can fill out an idea card and share their input that way and drop it in the box. These are great. You can move them around. So if one's getting a lot of traction somewhere and another maybe not so much, we can, we can move that one to a better location to try and gather people's ideas that way. So finally, we want, we'll take all of that input through those activities and develop a vision that's unique to Lincoln City. Every community surfaces with this unique set of goals, and they're based on community character, geography. There's also some overlap in themes that come out pretty frequently, so we'll see stuff grouped around the local economy and livability and education. So that's where we'll take all of this input that comes out and really do some expert crafting. This is where our, our broad experience as consultants comes into play, having worked in a variety of local governments and a variety of departments, using that knowledge along with my business partner, Jason, who's been doing this work for over 35 years. We'll, we'll use all those skills to do some expert crafting and work with the team here to make sure that the things, that the vision statements are things that feel very relevant to your community. We'll also be using some of the plans that you have in place here already. We know that you worked on a Parks Master Plan very recently, and so we'll be taking, making sure that the vision and the actions that are part of that are consistent with the other plans that you have in place. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions or comments you all might have.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Commissioners, do you have any questions for? Any comments? All right, I've got a couple.
Okay, great.
I'm glad you're including second homeowners in your outreach to get their opinions about the vision for Lincoln City. You might more, I would encourage you to maybe separate second homeowners into two groups. One are BRD owners who rent their homes out to tourists and probably may not use their homes very much during the year at all. They're more of an investment for future use. And then there are other second homeowners who do not rent their homes out. They use their homes exclusively for themselves or for their friends, and some of these homes have been in families two or three or more generations. And I think those two groups represent probably a very separate and distinct visions for Lincoln City. And I think it would be perhaps wise to capture information from them separately and not to mix it together. So that's just a suggestion, and perhaps one way you could do that would be through a focus group or through special sessions planned for when these folks are more likely to be in Lincoln City. And then the other thing, I think, the special events focus, getting data at special events is really good because you get a mix of tourists as well as a mix of city residents. I would like to see you schedule the open house for a time when a lot of people who work in Lincoln City in the service industry or in the tourist industry would be able to attend that if they wanted to. For example, a Monday or Tuesday evening, perhaps whichever day is, most people have off, you know, because if it's held on the weekend, they're going to be working and they won't be able to attend. And I really like the idea that you're including a lot of the data, translating it into Spanish for our Latino population, and I think it would be terrific if we had a Latino member on the vision team, if that's possible, or a Spanish speaker.
Thank you. Those are all great comments.
I have a question. Do you have a way to wait? Do you have a way to wait the input according to the demographics of our community when you finally get to where you've got data there setting on, so that we're more proportionate to the, to the true demographics of this community than maybe the, just the visitors that come through?
So the way, so we'll develop a database of all the ideas that come through. And so in some instances, you may be able to drill down into some of that data, like if we conducted an online survey, for example, and we included a few questions about demographics, you could wait that specific input that you collect. Intercept surveys, that's harder unless you, it could, it could probably be done, but it's, it'd be a bit more difficult to gather it that way. Typically, when you're just having a quick conversation with someone on the street, they're not likely to want to share their, you know, all of their demographics. You could try, or you could guess, but there are some tools where you, you could gather some of that information and include that in a summary report.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you and your team.
It's going to be a great project. Thank you very much.
All right. We now go to the public hearing deliberations. And I guess, is anyone here planning to testify at the public hearing? You are, all right. It is now 6:25 PM. The public hearing is now open to allow public comment regarding adoption of the 2017 Economic Opportunities Analysis and Housing Needs Analysis, which includes an updated buildable lands inventory. If adopted, this document will become part of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan and will recommend new goals and policies for the housing and economy chapters of the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission's role in this process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff, and present a recommendation to the city council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The city council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation or may, or may take other action. The Planning Commission and city council will evaluate the plan using three criteria. First, does it conform with statewide planning goals, in particular, goal number nine, economic development, and goal number 10, housing? Second, does it conform with portions of the plan that are not being considered for change? And third, does it conform with applicable provisions of the Lincoln City Municipal Code? Providing oral or written testimony at this hearing gives you the right to make an appeal to Oregon's Land Use Board of Appeals in regard to these proposed comprehensive plan changes, changes, should you choose to do so. The failure to raise an issue at the public hearing in person or by letter, or the failure to provide sufficient detail to allow the Planning Commission and/or city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report? Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, the Department of Land Conservation and Development very generously gave us a grant to carry out this activity, the buildable lands inventory, housing needs assessment, and economic opportunity analysis. We have been able to, to work with those funds and some additional city effort over the last several months to put this together, and the result is the report that you have before you in the packet. It's in, in three parts, as you can see from the title here. The first is the buildable lands inventory, and that involved looking at all the land of the city, taking out land subject to various constraints, steep slopes in the floodway, and other constraints, as you see here, using the available data that we have through our geographic information system, and inventories that we've taken in the past, particularly of significant riparian and significant wetland areas, and then also of wetlands in general, and our, also our tsunami evacuation zones. So pulling all this together, the consultants put together a series of maps, this one, that show the different constraints. The first one is for steep slopes, and just by definition, slopes over 25% are considered steep and troublesome to develop, and they are excluded from this. And I want to make it clear that because we're excluding them from the buildable lands inventory doesn't necessarily mean that they're not buildable. The idea is to come up with what is generally practically buildable, so that we have a clear picture of whether there's, whether we have sufficient lands to meet our housing and employment lands' needs for the next 20 years. It's always possible to take a piece of steep slope and through a lot of engineering and a lot of money, you can build on it, but this is, we're talking about really practical development. And also, this process is conservative in the sense that we would rather exclude land from the inventory than include it, just to make sure that we do have enough, that the net, the land that's left is sufficient to meet our needs. So this is, this one is steep slopes. You can see on the, on the left-hand map up in the northern area here, as you get up into the village's property, there's a lot of steep slopes there. Agnes Creek area on the right-hand map, and then just sort of particularly east of the urban growth boundary, which is shown in the violet color here, there's a lot of, a lot of steep slopes. And there's other steep slope areas interspersed in there as well, as you can see. Then we have the floodway. That's the channel that floodwaters take. You have, when you have a flood, you've got the water going through and then the water spreading out. The water going through is in the floodway. The only floodway within the city and the urban growth boundary is down here on the right-hand map in the Spooner Creek area. And the 100-year flood plain, we don't prohibit development in the 100-year flood plain, but as will be demonstrated later, it can be considered a constraint on development. But we have large areas of the 100-year flood plain, obviously all along the beach, much of Cutler City down here on the right, Taft Area here, and then in D-Lake, and sort of interspersed in some other areas along the lake as well. Significant riparian areas, it's a little bit hard to see on this map, but back around the year 2000, actually probably a little bit before that, the city, working with consultants, mapped significant riparian areas that meet certain standards. mapped significant riparian areas that meet certain standards that were, that were defined in advance, and there are, there are some areas you can see here, like on the north part of this cove along the lake, some down here, and some interspersed areas. The main one that's not along the lake is here along Agnes Creek, in the Agnes Creek open space, on the south side of Spooner Creek. And there are significant riparian areas, this is the area of transition from water to upland where the vegetation is influenced by its proximity to water. What makes them significant is that these particular areas are largely intact, the trees are there, they haven't been cut, the shore vegetation is there. Then we have significant wetlands, and these were mapped in the same process as the riparian areas, obviously here in the violet. This large area here is the east unit of Devil's Lake State Park, and this one here is the west unit of Devil's Lake State Park. That's the one that has the boardwalk going through it. And there's other wetland areas, too. You can see the sort of fingers going up into the Villages property, in the vicinity of the golf course, and various areas coming off the lake, and then some isolated wetlands as well. This area here on the lower right is where the city wastewater treatment plant is. That's city-owned land in there. Then areas of open water, obviously the lake and the ocean. So the lake is inside the urban growth boundary, so we want to make sure we don't count that as part of our buildable lands. And some streams they add in, just to make sure that we're not considering building, thinking that we're going to be building on streams, and then we have other wetlands, this sort of total wetlands area here. And this adds in the local tsunami evacuation zone, and we have the tsunami evacuation zone here. And again, this isn't something where we're saying people can't build in the tsunami evacuation zone. We have included that here as a possible constraint to consider, although it is not considered in our buildable lands inventory. We did not say people couldn't build in the tsunami evacuation zone, or that it would be constrained in any way, just by the fact that it's in a tsunami evacuation zone. But it is something we want to be thinking about, as we'll get into a little bit further here. So what we did was for, rendered land to be considered unbuildable, over twenty-five percent slope in the floodway, the open water, the Goal Five significant area, significant riparian and significant wetland areas. For the Hundred Year Flood Plain, the assumption was that it would be fifty percent of it could be built on, and the other fifty percent not. And then for wetlands and streams, we added a twenty-five-foot buffer around it. We don't have a buffer requirement in most cases, but again, to be conservative here, there was a twenty-five-foot buffer added. And then we developed a, or I should say, they developed a categories of what land is buildable, of different kinds, though there's vacant lands, and that's tax lots that don't have, either don't have any improvement or have improvements with a value of less than ten thousand dollars. Partially vacant land that may have an improvement of more than ten thousand dollars, but could be further divided to allow further building. Developed lots, public lands, public lands that are able to be developed in the future, principally that we're talking there about the Villages Cascadehead property, but there's other ones as well. Some of the key properties owned by the Urban renewal agency in particular, the so-called Hedrick property on the north side of the D River, the property at the end of Fifty-First Street in Taft, and a piece on Fifteenth, and another piece at Thirty-Second. And then, finally, undevelopable land. And so they also looked at the existing land use, and this in some ways looks similar to the zoning map, but it's not zoning, it's just how property is developed now, and a whole bunch of different categories on that, and then overlaid with the zoning. And then it started through a multi-step process, subtracting out different bits of land. This first takes out developed land, and then is just going further through, we're getting into the public and public available land, like here you can see the Villages property is available land, some other public land is not, like where the sewer treatment plant is, for example, is not available for development, and the open space land as well. Then we're getting into land that's partially vacant, it's developed but could be further developed or redeveloped, and then redeveloped of, in particular, on commercial land, and land subject to additional limitations. And I can, I can go through this kind of quickly, it shows how things build, and then you get to the bottom line of how much land is considered buildable in Lincoln City and the urban growth boundary. And it comes out to two thousand eighty-four lots with a total of thirteen hundred and thirteen acres of buildable land in the city. Then with that information, then we go forward through the economic opportunities analysis and housing needs assessment. The first thing in the economic opportunities analysis that the consultants did was look at our traded sectors in the community where we have a lot of, maybe an unusually high level of activity compared to other communities on the coast, or an unusually low level or a normal level. Like in particular, if you remember from the staff report, our Arts, Entertainment, and Recreation was really high compared to other communities. That's principally due to the casino, that's entertainment, and so it showed that we had a high concentration. There also, there's some areas that were low. There's two ways to think about things, things where there's a, where there's a high level of activity, high concentration, maybe that there's, we've become a center for those kinds of things. Areas where there's maybe a low concentration, you can think of, there's an opportunity there, there's an unmet need compared to other communities. So they did their analysis and came up with some target business types that we should be looking at or could be looking at, and this is a list of them, healthcare services, entrepreneurs and professional businesses, in particular people who can work from home, telecommute, that sort of thing. Artists and makers, and that's, we're not talking about artists, we're talking about people who, it's basically small manufacturing or something where they can work in a, you know, a small flex space or something that, you know, a bay in a, in a multi-bay building or something where they can, we have a number of them in the city now, and it's a, it's a growth opportunity there, I think. Subregional warehouses, we have a few where companies, basically it's a small distribution center or something like that. You can think of up Twenty-third Street, there's that small Federal Express or FedEx building there, that's an example of the kind of thing that could happen. General retail, and that is looking in particular at larger retail establishments, where because we don't have, you know, your Fred Meyers or Targets and that kind of thing, a portion of our retail spending leaves town and goes to other places, goes to Salem, goes to Newport or whatever. So the consultant's saying that's a possible opportunity to have those, have a larger retailer here. Food and beverage services, because we have a large influx of tourists all the time. Continuing care facilities, healthcare related in particular, because we have, as you saw in Ms. Singer's presentation, a high level of population, where, of people who are older, and the trend is we're getting old, the population is aging, and there'll probably be an increasing demand for various healthcare and continuing care facilities. Lodging, and then arts, entertainment, and recreation. And in some ways, that arts, entertainment, and recreation is probably a little bit too, unfortunately aggregated, because we can think of the arts, the small galleries, the small makers, like the glass-blowing studio is part of that, but so is the casino, and they're both important, but it probably, it's a little bit unfortunate that they're lumped together, but they are, and so, but it's just an opportunity in particular in the, in the arts area in general, where I think there's opportunities for growth there. So the consultants looked at three scenarios in evaluating what lands we would need for expected future employment growth. The first scenario looked at essentially our present trends with employment growing at the same rate as the population, which is a little bit under one percent annually. The second scenario takes the Oregon Employment Department ten-year growth estimates and projects it out twenty years, and also assumes that Lincoln City captures fifty percent of that retail outflow that we're losing now. So we do something to bring, keep it in the city. Ms. Meehan?
I don't know about other households in the community, but in the last few years, we've moved more and more and more toward Amazon delivering everything. This is a twenty-year-out projection. How are they factoring in the general loss of brick-and-mortar stores over that period of time?
Good question. I don't know, but I'll find out. Maybe Amazon will have a drone facility here.
Maybe, I mean, maybe that's where we should be looking toward those futuristic.
Yeah, you know, one of the things, like for distribution, of course, I think ideally, if, you know, if the world was flat, you would want to have a distribution facility in the center where you have three hundred and sixty degrees of distribution. We're cut off a hundred and eighty degrees of that, because of the ocean. So distribution's probably not going to be a major thing for us, but it's a possibility for local distribution. Anyway, and then the third scenario assumes the upper range of job growth under the two, under A and B. So if A said something's going up ten percent, and B says it's going up five percent, the scenario C would say ten percent. And so it just took, took all this, all of the highest, so it's the maximum possible. And they developed forecast with the scenario A having the lowest growth, and this is for twenty years, expecting to have fifteen hundred and sixty-seven jobs created in the next twenty years. Under scenario A, which is just, again, it's the population, same, job growth at the same rate as the population. Scenario B, which is the Oregon Economic Development Department having the sixteen hundred and ninety-two jobs, and then scenario C, seventeen hundred and thirty, which are the highest, so you can see where the higher number between A and B became the number in C. And then, working with that, figuring out, and there's, they have algorithms for exactly how, how much land you need per job, and figured out how much land would be needed under the three scenarios for commercial and industrial development, and then the numbers range from forty-five to fifty-two acres, as you can see here. And then looking at the vacant land supply, with properties owned commercial or mixed use or industrial, it's the total, we have a hundred and eighty-eight point four acres of supply, again, a demand of fifty-two at the most, so we have over three times the amount of land that's needed for, for employment. One factor to consider here, while the land is buildable, some of it is not well-served by water and sewer in particular, or in some cases even by streets. So that's something that, you know, the council's going to have to be looking at how we make sure that land gets served, so it becomes really useful for economic development. They also looked at redevelopable land, which is land that may be partially vacant or just has a low improvement value on it, and there's another hundred and twenty-one point seven acres of that land. So again, and that's, the redevelopable is twice the area of the demand, so we have a surplus of vacant and redevelopable land for employment purposes.
Could you explain that a little further, what redevelopable means to you?
It's land that is partly developed, but not fully developed, or is developed at a low density compared to what could be on it. An example of something that's not redevelopable, but is at relatively low density, is the mall. It is relatively low-density area, but it's a large lot with, you may think surprisingly little development on it in terms of buildings, but because of its parking requirement, the land is full, it cannot be redeveloped. The Lighthouse Square is an area you might think of as, probably is, is at least partly redevelopable, especially since it's got, you know, a lot of vacancies there, it's largely vacant, so.
The advantages to that is that it has water and sewer in place.
So then, and the next thing was to look at the housing land demand, and there were four scenarios for housing demand compared to three for the employment land. The baseline forecast was just taking the recent trends and just continuing them forward, looking at various owner-occupied, renter-occupied, second homes and so on, how much land we would be needing, and just on the present trends, that came out to two hundred and six point three acres additional of land needed for the projected fourteen hundred and eighty-four dwelling units that will be developed over the next twenty years. Scenario B, the second scenario, was to look at the baseline, plus with an emphasis on workforce housing, and that came through promoting more economic development to bring jobs and then creating demand for workforce housing, as well as pushing for policies that would help to promote workforce housing. That came up with a higher number of dwelling units, eighteen hundred and fourteen, and a need for two hundred and forty-eight point six acres of buildable land for housing over the next twenty years.
Richard?
Can you take into account on this particular piece, the fact that we probably have a group of people that would love to live in the town, have worked here already, but have no housing?
Right, yeah, it does, yes.
So that is accounting for it, Plan B does that?
Right, yeah, there's, so it's really two, two aspects to additional workforce housing is housing for the new jobs, housing for people who have jobs but can't live here. So the supply... So, the supply, it's 1,124 and a half acres. Again, the demand is 248.6 under the scenario B, so there's a surplus of land. And then, looking more closely at the four scenarios, and that was just the first two going over, we have the business-as-usual, economic development, workforce housing scenario, and then a redevelopment scenario that's encouraging better use of the existing land that's already served and already partly developed, and also with infill. And then a fourth scenario that we added to minimize development in the tsunami hazard zone, and encourage development outside the tsunami hazard zone. The four scenarios, as I said, the scenario one, the present trends, the baseline, 1,484 units, the other two scenarios had 1,814 new dwelling units. Then we had the employment forecast with business-as-usual, 1,567 jobs, and the scenario is two for four, 1,730 new jobs, and you can see that many of them are in retail, and we have industrial, office, and hotel and hospitality, so principally retail and office are where the new jobs would be coming. These are based on some variables that fit into their formula, where we vary the percent of housing that is affordable, the mix of multifamily versus single-family, and the cost of rental units and owner-occupied units, and the percent of total new housing that second homes make up. And also things that vary is the distribution of new housing geographically, and the distribution of new jobs geographically. You want them to be closely related for walkability and sustainability reasons, and affordability reasons, so people don't have to spend as much money getting to their jobs. And then, also the redevelopment rate, and the land that is consumed, also variables in the scenarios. So under these four scenarios, the percentage of new housing that is affordable, under the first scenario, the business is usual, 26% of new dwelling units would be affordable, 35% with the emphasis on development of workforce housing, and then on the redevelopment and tsunami resilience, it would be very similar to the business-as-usual scenario.
What percentage of existing housing is considered affordable?
I'm not sure.
I'm just wondering how it relates to these.
Well, I can tell you that for both renters and owners, more than 50% of households are considered rent or housing cost burdened.
Considered what?
Pardon me?
I didn't hear you.
More than 50% of both owner-occupied and renter-occupied houses, the, it's considered basically cost burdened, where they're paying more than 30% of their income for housing and utilities. The normal desired thing that was considered affordable is if it's below 30%. It also varies, the percent of the affordable housing, whether it's multifamily or single-family, again, in the workforce housing scenario, a much higher percentage is multifamily, and in the others, it ranges from 5% to 9% multifamily. And this is of new dwelling units. Percentage of second homes or vacation homes in the new housing, as you know, more than a third of our present homes in Lincoln City, or more than a third of our dwelling units are people's second homes, and under the present trends, it would consider, it would continue going forward, predicting at about 28% lower percentages if, under the other Then we get to the land consumed, and the business-as-usual, you would use the least amount of land, workforce housing would use more, and again, the reason the other three, or one of the principal reasons the other three criteria use more, or the other three scenarios use more land is because they're providing housing for more people, more jobs and more people. The tsunami resilience is the highest, but not by much, and again, that's because we're using more land and pushing areas, pushing development into upland areas that would not necessarily be developed as quickly because of location. Then, the consultants developed these heat maps that show how the activity levels would be, and this is basically where activities, construction and development would be the highest, in the, and this is, like, in the, you know, all four of them have a relatively high area of activity in this spot, and that's Logan Road and 101. That's because there can be substantial amount of redevelopment there, and there is also substantial amount of vacant land that's good for commercial use. The fourth scenario in particular, you can see there's more activity up here in the villages, and some here in the Nell Scott Gap area. This is where we're pushing in the development out of the tsunami areas into higher land, so you can see that it is pushing it away from like the river and closer areas to the beach. The workforce housing, again, some in the villages around Logan Road and the Nell Scott Gap and 23rd Street, you see the activities there. Redevelopment, a lot of heat on the 23rd Street area and the Logan Road area, and also in the villages. So that's where it's all the analysis that was gone through, or representations of all the analysis, you've got it, the whole thing in the report, you've got it in the packet. Now, the, after going through all this, the technical advisory group or project advisory committee had a number of meetings to go over these with the consultants, the staff has gone over it and developed a number of policies, proposed policies. What this, what these would do, if adopted, these would replace the existing policies in the existing comprehensive plan. If you look in the existing comprehensive plan, there's very, very little in the way of policies on housing and on economic development, and they're very broad and, well, just not really focused, and they don't really address the current economy of the community, the current housing situation, and so on. The proposed draft policies that we have are much greater depth, and much greater detail, and much more in tune with what's going on now. The existing policies, if you put them together, I don't think would take up a page, and here we have, as you know, several pages of policies. I have them all here on slides, if you would like to go through them, we can start going through them.
Can I ask you a question, Richard, before you go further? In all the constraints that you looked at, in terms of buildability, and then what the consultants then took forward in their analysis, I didn't see anything that looked at potential impacts from sea level rise. And I know there are other coastal communities that are looking at potentially needing to move infrastructure out of areas that, in their future planning, that could be impacted, or buttressing against certain influences of rising sea level. I'm wondering if you think those tsunami maps are sort of a surrogate for that impact?
Well, yes and no. Like, where I live in Rhodes Island, the tsunami run-up is up to elevation of 75 feet. And the sea level rise, we're talking like three feet or something like that. I think that in the comprehensive planning process, natural hazards, we will be having a focus on that, and sea level rise is one thing that will be considered in that. But I think the short answer is no, it's not taken out in terms of the buildable lands inventory. But, in a way, a surrogate for that can be, you know, the 50% of the floodplain area, because the 100-year floodplain, because a substantial portion of that actually is...
That could even be a conservative estimate, because most of the world's civilized cities are built on floodplains, so...
So, I don't know if you've gone through the policies, I don't think you want me to read them all to you. If you've gone through and you have comments on any particular one of them, I can just go through slide by slide here, and if somebody has anything, chime in, so...
Maybe describe how you organize them as you go through, or how you organize your present...
Well, the first area, this is on just land availability, and for commercial industrial land, this first set of things is related to employment lands and economic development. So it's talking about making sure that the plan map has an adequate supply of land, and monitor it over time, and make sure that there's suitable zoning and access to infrastructure. And then, the next is talking about, for economic development, again, coordinating with local and regional partners, and one of the big things here is to create an economic development team, not just with, not just with city staff, but with all kinds of partners, state and local governments, business, local citizens, nonprofits, and so on, and then to develop a strategy for economic development. And more coordination, encourage industrial and commercial development outside of the tsunami zone, and what I think is important is consider joining the Oregon Main Street program.
Could you explain that to us, what that is?
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite Allison Robertson up here from the Urban Renewal Agency. She is more familiar with the Main Street program, and I probably could speak better to that.
Hi, so there's actually a national Main Street program, and then there's a state Main Street program. The state one, I think, has a little bit more options in terms of what is required by the city, and in order to apply for grants, for example, for facade improvement, as you know, Urban Renewal has facade improvement loans, but in order to get grant monies for facade, you have to be a member of the Main Street program. So, this is something that I think would open up some access to additional funding that could be used by our local property and business owners.
Are there downsides to being part of the Main Street program?
That's a great question. I would just say, staff time. It's a great program, and it has a lot of resources, and along with resources comes staff time in order to use those resources. So, otherwise, I wouldn't say that there's any downside.
So we're not tied to anything, or we don't have to do things in a certain way because of being part of the program, or...
I don't think so, no. There are different levels, so you can decide how ambitious you want to be.
Thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt you. Then there's a series of policies relating to promoting and encouraging new businesses to, with family wage jobs, with a plan to attract such businesses, and also, in part two, by doing that through creating a quality of life here with, through the schools, healthcare, housing, transportation, and so on, that make people want to come here or stay here and operate their businesses because of the quality of life here. Facilitate development of industrial lands for manufacturing, and working with the Chamber of Commerce and others to develop a plan, a marketing plan, that describe why businesses would want to be here. Encourage property owners to prepare their land for development, and help them to market them, and look at the codes to identify opportunities to clarify and simplify both the, our zoning requirements and the process, and look at possible incentives to lower development And then, the next is support success and growth of existing businesses through things like open communication and staff support, resources, and administer existing and explore new programs that support local businesses, and the city itself to use local businesses to supply materials and supplies where we can. Patty, you look like you're...
Well, some of these are, I guess I'm struck by the broad language in some of these, and some of them are... That top one, number one, provide available staff support, seems to be like it could become expensive.
Well, the potential is there, I guess it comes down to what's available, you know? We all have a lot to do, but...
It's just a case in point, there's, some of these are, there's a lot to, these are loaded.
Yeah, they are, yeah, but it's a, the city council's made a decision that we want to put emphasis on economic development, and that, so, part of Allison Robertson is the Urban Renewal Director, a big part of her job now is more in economic development, and planning as well, has some more emphasis on that, so, yeah, but, yeah, I mean, it's, the potential is there to get out of hand, but it's just a matter of, I guess, self-control in a way, so... And then, foster the city's recreational tourism-based economy, and several policies on how to do that, in particular, considering indoor and outdoor events, consider developing a sports complex, and explore the development of additional attractions or things there. And then look at, for businesses that support, provide for the day-to-day... And then look at for businesses that support, provide for the day-to-day needs of city residents, including the growing population of retirees. So that the idea is to, oh, several ideas. One is for possible zoned land for small-scale commercial development near where people live, so they don't have to get their car to go everywhere. And more related to that is businesses and locations that facilitate walkable neighborhoods, and then also look at how retirees spend their money and what support they desire or need. Again, because that, as we've seen, that's a, be a growing proportion of our population, and we'll make sure they're properly served. And then have, there's some policies here on workforce development, to encourage the development of a local workforce with the skills that the local businesses need, and looking at what skills they want, working with the, with partners to support training and support affordable housing for the workforce, and school programs that stimulate civic engagement, work ethic, job skills, and entrepreneurism. And then provide the infrastructure to support economic development and employment growth. And there's several policies here. Then housing. There's, these first ones are pretty broad and general. Annex and zone an adequate supply of land outside the tsunami inundation zone to accommodate the housing needs, promote a variety of housing densities and housing types, and revise the comprehensive plan and the zoning districts and rules as needed to make sure we have the proper mix of housing.
Richard, a question comes to my mind. I've noticed in some areas of the city, in fact, on my street right now, there's an area that was zoned multifamily, but is being developed as single-family. Should that using one zone for another purpose be of concern in looking at the comprehensive plan? Are there way, do some cities or communities say that zoned multifamily, that's what you put in there?
Right. And that is, that is a concern. That's actually something that has been raised by others. On the east side of the highway in Ocean Lake, almost all that land where all those single-family homes are, that's zoned multifamily. And it is a concern that multifamily zoned land is being taken up by single-family homes. So that's one thing we need to take a look at. There are communities that you cannot build single-family in a multifamily zone, you have to build multifamily, because that's the intent of it.
That would require an ordinance by the city council?
That would require an ordinance. That's something that you can recommend, you know, the commission can recommend to the council that they revise the multifamily to exclude single-family homes, for example.
So we don't have a zoning designation that's mixed use with single-family and multifamily at some proportional...
The single-family zones, that are one zones, is all single-family and duplexes. The multifamily zone is single-family duplexes and multifamily and attached single-family and so on. So...
So it's a category?
It's basically of those things, whatever you want to do. There's no, you know, there's no, this part of it is, you know, the density doesn't build, you know, we remember last night in Lawrence Kumar's presentation about the transect, there was, you went from rural to the community center, city center kinds of things, where the density got higher, the closer you got. We don't have that kind of transitional thing, but that's something that to consider. That's one thing it talks about revising the plan designations and zoning districts. That may be something that we want to take a look at. And in particular, it talks about encourage a variety of housing types, such as accessory dwelling units, duplexes, duplexes, triplexes, tiny houses, and the big houses, which are the, you know, four, six-unit, basically apartments that look like just big single-family houses, senior housing and so on. Incentives to encourage development outside the tsunami zone and things that possibly to discourage development within the tsunami zone. So basically, lower density in those areas. There already is state laws that prohibit certain things in the tsunami zone, but that's, you know, like essential facilities like, you know, the police station, fire station, and also, you know, like hospitals, schools, large assembly things, you know, you don't want to have a concert, you know, thousands of people in the building that gets inundated.
We're pretty good at having our essential facilities outside of the zone.
Yes. And actually, you know, the school district, you know, when they closed the original Taft Elementary for, just for this reason, to get it out of the tsunami zone. And zone multifamily areas, zone for multifamily housing in areas close to shopping, employment and so on, outside of the tsunami zone. Control the number and location of vacation rentals to preserve adequate housing for residents. And then with regard to affordability, we're looking at, the proposals looking at approaches to setting fees and system development charges as low as possible. For affordable housing, also possibly have expedited review and permitting, and consider offering property tax exemptions to low-income rental housing that meet certain criteria. Consider applying system development charges on a square foot or fixture count basis. And more, more communities are going to that, where, so like a 6,000 square foot house right now, like I said, a 6,000 square foot house pays the same system development charge as an 800 square foot house does.
I think that's one where we can move on it quickly, more specifically, and fix that. That's a big hole.
Yeah.
It's a big hole.
Can I ask a question that I didn't quite understand from the report? Saying system development charges now are charged upfront when you apply for the permit, correctly?
When you pay for your building permit, when you pick up your building permit, you pay your system development charge.
And there is a suggestion that it be deferred until the...
Till occupancy.
Till occupancy. Where does that put the cost then? Does that, would the cost appear in increased rent or increased cost for the house?
The system development charges are going to get passed through no matter when it's charged. The main thing is that while the project is under construction, that money is not spent for the developer, so it's just less money out of pocket.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's several other possible incentives here. Give priority to capital improvement projects that support affordable homes and work with policy ten here, to facilitate vacant developments, vacant undeveloped land by bringing together property owners, developers and financiers through a local accelerator program. In other words, just try to get all the players together so that things can get worked out. And several partnership policies to support housing for low and moderate income. And one in particular at the bottom here is look into establishing a nonprofit development corporation where we could work with others to actually make affordable housing happen through actually being developers, possibly again with other, with other partners on a nonprofit basis. And establish an affordable housing program that increases the supply through using the Affordable Housing Fund. And there's, again, several policies here, and of course, one being the emphasis on the tsunami zone, only spend the city money and efforts outside the tsunami inundation Look at ways to, review our regulations, possibly consider an inclusionary zoning program for multifamily, and consider preapproving accessory dwelling unit and other housing designs to lower housing costs for residents. Actually, the budget committee, it hasn't been adopted by the city council yet, but the budget committee did approve the budget. That includes funding for, to prepare plans for, I think it probably end up being three different designs for affordable homes that we can put through the process. They would be preapproved, somebody wants to build it, here it is, there's an approved plan, doesn't have to go through the plan review process. They don't have to pay for design, they don't have to pay for the plan review process, so it'd be cheap and quick. I guess doing what we can to lower the cost of that. And just look at the code to reduce barriers to affordable housing and look at, again, keeping it out of the tsunami inundation zone, and for property that is in the tsunami inundation zone, give it, for low-density or low-intensity non-residential uses. And include regulations that ensure multifamily buildings and special needs housing are attractive for the residents in their neighborhoods. That's talking about design standards and things like recreational area and that kind of thing that make the housing attractive where it's not, not a blight. Encourage housing for special needs populations, including independent living for seniors, assisted living, memory care, drug and alcohol rehab, and mental health facilities. We have some of all of that in the city, but very little, and it's scattered, as it probably should be scattered. I think there's a growing need for independent living for seniors, housing, or, you know, like a development where you have independent living and gradual levels of care, where you're independent living, and then assisted living, then nursing home, and memory unit, and that kind of thing. And then control the number and location of vacation rentals, make sure that there's an appropriate balance, and fine-tune the policies as needed. I think that's the end. Yeah, it is.
Thank you very much, Richard. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Richard? Any further questions? Patty?
Can you just recap what those, those are the suggested policies that came out of the consultant's efforts, correct?
Consultant's efforts in working again with staff and with the project advisory team, and through, you know, several iterations, getting based on the buildable lands inventory that, in the housing needs assessment and economic opportunities assessment.
Richard, I have some problem with the estimates for housing because it's my opinion that we've got a lot more potential than you show here because of our weather pattern here is so much better than the East Coast, for example, the coastal communities that are prevalent on the East Coast, and they're large, they've got some waterfront properties, but then the city stretches up the hill like, or on the flat area behind that, whether you see New Jersey shoreline cities or North Carolina cities on the coast, they are larger. And I think our population could grow a lot more with the right kind of housing units, and our estimates are really low. Does that make any sense, or am I dreaming optimistically?
You know, that's a hard question to answer, you know? The first scenario looks at, looks back and say, well, what's been happening like the last 10 years, and we can, okay, let's just assume it keeps going the way it is. Then there's also some projections based on what's been happening from the Oregon economic development people on how growth can be expected. We have actually population projections from Portland State. And then there's, you know, the other scenarios are looking at where we put emphasis on things like workforce housing, there could be more growth on that. But I think thinking that there would be a boom, I mean, like a big boom, like the Villages at Cascadehead property was approved for over 1,800 units, and the idea was going to build out in 15 years. And I think as of now, there's like 12 have been built. Realistically, I think that if you're, if you think there's going to be a lot more housing, it's going to be because there's a whole new market has, is developed. For the second homeowners, there's only a certain distance that the majority of them come from, you know, Portland, Salem, maybe as far as Idaho for some of them. The, I don't think the economy is here yet for a lot of growth. We typically, our employers here tend to be small employers, there's exceptions, the casino, the school district, the city, the hospital, those are the big exceptions.
But the retirement community could grow quite a bit if there was housing, and that would support our second industry, which is healthcare. And I could see the retirement generation, fifty, seventy, growing a lot if there were housing here.
Yeah, and it could happen. And one of the things came up the other night was, do we have a plan for marketing to seniors? Do we plan to market to seniors? And we're not marketing to seniors right now, as, you know, not promoting Lincoln City as a retirement destination. And that's a possibility, something that could happen. Within this context, if that did, and we got more growth because of more seniors coming here, again, again, in this context, we have plenty of land. We have like four times what we need. So if twice as many retirees came here, we still would have plenty of buildable land.
But that brings me to my other big concern, which is the traffic pattern that we have here. And I know from living on the lake and looking at the golf course, the road, that it can be stacked up in August and July, September, when the heat is in excess of eighty... in excess of 80 degrees in the valley. So that brings me to the need for a second, uh, situat- uh, roadway, Foothills Boulevard, as you call part of it. And I think that the plan should entail, uh, that so that the traffic congestion on 101 is eliminated and local people and going to work and going shopping can get around without clogging, uh, the main arterial in town.
Yeah, and having the, uh, having, uh, uh, parallel routes to 101, like the, the Foothills Boulevard art thing, uh, it's important and that's something that, uh, uh, will be addressed in the transportation part of the new comprehensive plan. And I don't know if that's in the transportation system plan now or not, but having the parallel routes, and I believe it is.
We do talk a lot about connectivity in the transportation system plan. We also talk about a east-west connection from roads end to the highway that would line up right with, uh, east levels like road intersection. We do, I believe, show the connection. If, if we didn't in the original 2015 TSP, uh, show the connection through the, uh, Nell Scott Gap area, I'm sure that we'll be amending it to do that when we adopt the plan. Because we had the same consultant come back and analyze the Nell Scott plan, uh, for what we needed to change in the TSP and any policies, so, uh, yeah, I think we're on that one.
Any more questions? Thank you very much, Richard. Yeah. So now's the time for public comment and testimony. Uh, you may have up to, to three minutes to provide comment. Please state your name for the record. You don't need to give us your address and I don't have your name, so can't call. You're welcome to come up. Please, uh, speak directly into the microphone so we can hear you and our viewing, viewing audience can hear you as well. And Kate will, uh, keep the time. You, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Patrick Wingard. I'm with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. I work out of the Tulamook office. I've had the privilege, pleasure of working with the project advisory committee on this project, uh, for the past year or so. Um, our department, as Richard mentioned, uh, provided some of the grant funding that helped to get this project completed. My job really here is to be a cheerleader for the, the, um, proposed plan amendments. We don't have funding at the state level like we have had in the past to help our local jurisdictions keep their comprehensive plans updated regularly through a program previously, uh, known as periodic review for many reasons. The state just has not been able to cobble together the funding through our department or other means to help communities such as Lincoln City keep their plan updated. So when you have this opportunity and your staff did a very good job of making their project rise to the top, uh, very much so was the number one project in the region, it's just essential that these projects get adopted into your comprehensive plan. I don't have time to go through all the great questions, um, that were presented, whether it's, it's online retailers and the impacts. Um, there was a good question there. There is a section in, in the, in the plan, um, that addresses that. Probably not to the, the detail that you might be looking for, but it's pages 14 and 15, um, of the housing needs assessment in buildable lands inventory. Um, the, the good question on housing attainability, that's also, uh, mentioned in pages 28 and 29 of the plan. And, um, I think there was another good comment, oh, about sea level rise. The updated flood maps will account for sea level rise and I think your flood zone constraint covers that in some regard. I'll, I'll, I'll close with this comment and Richard, I provide, I provided Richard just some notes that myself and my colleague, uh, in Salem, going through the housing needs assessment. You know, I think you really have the policies in place for economic development and housing. Um, it's really splitting hairs at this point, some of the, some of the points, Richard, that I, that I made. But, um, I'll close with, you might consider a little bit more specificity on the multifamily housing topic. You mentioned your, your multifamily housing zones and you commonly see single family dwellings because politically it's really tough to prohibit single family dwellings in your multifamily zones. But through appropriate design standards and your Nell Scott plan gives you a great example of the way that design can be integrated into quality, whether it's row homes, townhomes, what have you. You might look at a little bit more specificity in regards to attached housing, multifamily housing and how that, you know, will provide for workforce attainability. That's it. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience tonight.
Of course. Well, thank you for, for your service.
Yeah, if I can, can add something, you know, um, uh, Patrick mentioned it might be politically difficult to zone, to not allow single family in multifamily zones. But one thing we can do is zone some, single family zone for multifamily so that we increase the amount of land that's possible to have multifamily and, and still allow single family on it. Instead of.
Idea.
Yeah. Going the other way is what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I think you're well on your way to success. I always say when I'm here in town that, I live in Astoria, even though I work out of the Tulamook office. And, um, you, you just have done a lot of very good work over the past decade. I mean, I know some of the history of it on the north central coast for 20 years with ODOT and the highway system. And, I mean, Lincoln City, you have a, really a lot going for you. And again, it was just a pleasure working on this project and, um, you know, I, I hope that you'll be able to see it through to the end with a recommendation to your council and then I'll come back to the city council hearing as well.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks for the money.
You're welcome.
Yeah, very much so.
So is there any person in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Is there any comment from representatives of public agencies? No comments, okay. If there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
I'll move to close.
Is there, is there a second, P. Emotion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's time for our deliberation. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Let me, uh, Mr. Chair, let me tell you what we're looking for here. Uh, is a recommendation to the city council on, uh, um, adopting the buildable lands inventory, economic opportunities analysis and housing needs assessment and on, uh, uh, adopting the draft policies, uh, and, uh, amending the comprehensive plan to put those policies in the comprehensive plan.
That's a large mouthful. Yes, it is. You could. I'd like to, uh, I would like to go ahead and recommend that we adopt or move, move to have council adopt.
Recommend to the council.
Recommend to council that they adopt the housing analysis, needs, buildable lands inventory, opportunity and economic opportunities analysis along with the proposed recommendations or, no, policies that were incorporated in it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Kate, could you call the roll call vote, please?
Robinson?
Yes.
Schlesinger?
Yes.
Crowen?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
And Griffiths?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you all and thank staff and thank the members of the technical advisory committee for their hard work. All right. Next on the agenda is reports and comments. Any community development director, Mr. Townsend?
Um, I've said enough for now, I think. Oh, yeah, I guess one thing is, uh, would you probably, it'd be a good time to formally decide whether you want to meet on July 4th?
I think this will be an easy one. Would, any motions for, would anybody like to meet on July?
Fireworks?
We could have fireworks. We could, we could bring up vacation rentals if you want, so.
I propose we do not meet on July 4th.
I second.
I think just a consensus is fine.
Thank you. All right, where am I? Uh, city attorney, any comments? Planning commissioners. I would just like to say I want to thank you for suggesting that Miles, myself and Patty attend the workshop. And Eugene, I, we found it very worthwhile and I think, just speaking for myself, but I think we, I share the sentiment. Uh, it made us aware of what good training we've received as members of our planning commission here in Lincoln City. And, uh, so thank you for that. And, uh, it was good to share, um, to hear from people who have more experience than we have had and what their, you know, what tips they have for us. And, uh, when I walked out of that meeting, uh, what I learned most was we really need to listen, listen, listen and make sure we provide a forum for the public to express their opinions on the issues that we bring before them. Patty, anything to add or Miles? Well, thank you, yeah.
Thank you for going.
Yeah.
And I think future agenda items, next meeting, it looks like we're going to have a busy agenda.
Yes, there's, uh, actually be six hearings, uh, at that meeting. There, there, uh, hearings on some zoning ordinance amendments, they're all, uh, minor, relatively minor amendments. There's, uh, um, probably the most significant one relates to temporary uses where, uh, uh, the council or in some circumstances, the planning director is able to authorize for a short period, uh, uses that ordinarily wouldn't be allowed. Uh, there's an amendment to the general commercial zone that would allow indoor theaters as a, as a permitted use rather than a conditional use. Uh, some amendments to the, uh, code coming out of the transportation system plan. Uh, a minor change to the vacation rental dwelling rules. The, the change is, uh, because we have a cap of 10% of the units in the R1 zone, we want to make sure that if people have a vacation rental land use approval, but don't bother to get a license. In other words, they're not using their land use approval. We want those to be eliminated so that people who, uh, uh, do want to make use of their places as vacation rentals can. Domestic fowl will be coming back. We'll have an ordinance amendment on that. And, uh, some changes to the land use inspection enforcement, uh, provisions of the code. That should fill the evening.
That's it. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.